Five fifteen, well good evening everyone. Board of Directors and welcome to the regular meeting for December of the Harlan Community School District. We appreciate all the visitors here as well as this administrator's welcome and glad to have everyone here. This tonight is definitely a page turner because next week will be in a new year. So the new, next board meeting will be in the new year and I think I can speak for the whole district in thanking the new members. We've got a whole year under our belt already and the old people too. I guess we should thank them. They're even more than us. We do appreciate that. So tonight we have on the Finance Committee Rachel Larson, Policy Shekinger, Hazleton and Albertson and so this meeting is called to order and we can determine, I think that we do have a...
Hi everybody.
That looks great. This is a public forum and so we do note that citizens are welcome to participate. That's what it says in the first line here by statute and so they are, citizens are welcome to come. Of course, we rely heavily on the administration to carry out all the duties of the school district and if that doesn't happen, we welcome them to come. This may be a good time to mention too, if we have any problems with the administration, particularly Superintendent, we can speak to her anytime and talk about those items, either constructive praise or constructive criticism. Studies universally have shown that's the best way to enable change in people that are, that you're working with. However, the state statute also does say that we need to evaluate the superintendent according to certain standards and wanted to go on public record that we have been collaborating with the Superintendent Dr. Barnett about the goals that she's willing, wanting to accomplish this next year and in the spring we'll have a closed session and evaluate her on the, on those standards that she is trying to get all accomplished this year. So it's maybe a good place to start here. So first we have item C here, the approval of the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda?
Some would.
Got you. Making the motion and Greg seconding it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed to the agenda, nay. Okay, the next we have the discussion, item D. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Barnett.
Okay, we have lots of people here tonight to present. We're excited. Why don't we go in order? So we'll start out with the FFA convention. So I'm gonna hand it over to Justine and her team and...
Now we're open.
So, yeah, you're kind of, like, we have pictures too, so I don't know, you can look at either direction, okay? So anyway, we went on our national FFA convention trip back at the last week of October. We go on this trip every year. The convention for the last several years has been held in Indianapolis, Indiana. And this year we, well, it used to be held in Louisville some years and we liked Kentucky a lot, it's really pretty and stuff and it's not that far from Indianapolis. So this year we did a, kind of a hybrid. We went down to Kentucky and then we came back for the convention in Indianapolis a day, so we did both. And then we do take this trip with, I think we had five other area schools that attended with us this year because we take, we take a charter bus. And we had 56 people on the bus, so it was, it's a good chance for these guys to get to know other people. It's also safe because we have a professional driver and, you know, advisors can, you know, relax on that part of it and, but we plan the whole trip still and coordinate on where we're gonna go and everything. So from our school specifically, we had 10 participants and then both the FFA advisors, Mr. White and I went. We, we have 10 seats on the bus, so what we do is we go through an application process at our school to select who's going to attend. And we had a variety of ninth through 11th graders this year that went, so in order there's their names and then, not everybody could come tonight to present, but I do have Cheyenne, Levi and Addison here with me, so they're gonna tell us about, or tell you guys about the trip and what we did and everything. So first, we traveled, like I said, we traveled to Kentucky and this was specifically the Lexington area mainly. We visited two different bourbon distilleries. Levi will tell you there's no taste testing involved, he'll just, he'll tell you more about what we did at those places, but more of the agricultural side of things. And Wild Turkey was where we really wanted to tour, but they were currently not open to tours. So we just kind of drove by, visited and looked around and got to see some of that. And then we went to a tobacco farm and this is a place that we've been going for years. So I, I'll tell you a little bit about Rusty, he's quite the guy. So we got a good education there from him and then we went to a horse breeding farm and Keeneland Horse Races, so I'll let them kind of tell you about what we did.
So first we went to Whiskey Thief Distillery, which is a farm where they produce most of their grain that they use to distill into bourbon. And the bourbon gets put into barrels where it sits for five years at least and then they sell it to people all over the country and world. And they also do tastings, which we do not do, and tours. Then we went to Rusty's Tobacco Farm where Rusty explained how they grow the tobacco in plant, like, in plants and the plants have to be touched by hand and you can't use a machine on them. And he showed, he explained the process of cutting the plants and putting them into the rafters of the barn you see on the right. And the wind blows through the holes in the side of the barn and it dries down the tobacco plants until they can cut the leaves off a plant and...
I'm sorry. Quick question, is Rusty, picture of him on here?
He's the one right here, this guy, the one holding the tobacco up.
Oh, over there?
And actually, yeah, he's right, like, he's the pink shirt girl.
Or the green hat?
The other guys...
The one on the right?
No, the one on the right.
And so the quality of the tobacco leaf is based on the, the spot on the plant where it grows, so the higher up the plant, the more sunlight it gets and the better the quality is. And the county cattleman also provided this much.
And this, in that county, there's only like four tobacco farms left and so, you know, they kind of talked about the impact on their economy from that and everything because tobacco's one of the top crops in Kentucky or used to be at least. And then they also, he also did some math on like the tax dollars that their farms generate for our states, like it's in the millions. So that was kind of a cool math, I guess. We learned some math that day that the government really doesn't want to shut these down, so we'll put it that way.
So next we went to Shavel Breeding Horse Farm. So this is a stud farm where thoroughbred, racehorses are bred. Thoroughbreds can't be artificially inseminated, so they have to be live bred. So they fly in studs from all over the world to this farm to be able to breed. So we toured the facility. It's pretty cool, but there was a couple breeding barns that we went through and then we got more information about the place. It is owned by the Sheikh of Dubai, but he recently passed away, so now it's passed down to his daughter, so he's pretty rich. So it's a pretty cool fancy facility that we got to see.
Did that horse photobomb you a little bit?
Yeah, those are teaser horses and so they just, they hang out at the farm and just run around all day.
Why can't they be artificially inseminated?
Um, just like for race purposes, they're, I mean, they're so in shape that it's hard to...
Well, yeah, it's also, it's, I don't know, I guess I really don't know, but it's always been that way for thoroughbred horse racing that they are only live bred.
Okay.
There's a lot of money in that industry and a lot of it goes through Kentucky, so they also do like, I mean, it could be like, horses can get STDs and stuff too, so they do STD testing and all of that kind of stuff. And so it's like, it's a big thing, like, they told us all about it. No, no artificial insemination though.
That's unusual in the livestock world, I mean, you know, because that's...
Yeah, no, it's not, yeah, it's not like our production based beef and hogs and things that we think of.
And then we went to Keeneland, the horse races. We stayed for about three races, so it was really cool to be able to go up to the track. It's a pretty big, it's a big place. I mean, there were a lot of people, we got up close to the track as you can see and it was pretty cool to be able to be that close to it.
How did you bet on the poters?
We're not up with that, so...
Did Levi get kicked out of this pile?
No, he would find him, he was, yeah, he was hanging out with Mr. White, so... Okay, and then we went to, so after we did all that stuff in the Kentucky area, then we went to Indianapolis for the convention and this is one of the largest student conventions in the world really. There's 70,000 FFA members from across the country that attend this convention each year. And we kind, we did all the, you know, typical convention stuff, so we went to an opening session, we heard keynote speaker there and then we went to the career show and expo and just did some other fun things there, so they're gonna tell you about that.
So our first thing we did in Indianapolis was go into the opening sessions. Our keynote speaker was Tamika Catchings. She is a four-time like gold Olympian. She's actually deaf. All of her childhood she got bullied for it. Nobody believed that she could become a basketball player due to that. And she kind of proved them wrong and throughout her speech she talked about overcoming bumps in the road and so much things they can accomplish in life. After that, we went to the career show and expo. There were so many little businesses there, like egg or not. There's a lot of universities. I for one walked around and talked to as many people as I could. I mean, I was there for like a long time, probably more than half of the day and it just wasn't enough time to get everywhere, but I learned all about universities and just overall what was there was a great selection for kids in the egg side and non. Our last thing we did on our trip was go to a rodeo. It was fun to just have a little evening that wasn't so rushed and to see, you know, bronc riding, bull riding, we even saw some trick horse riding. It was just a really fun evening before we left to come back to Iowa.
Okay, that was our trip, so if anybody has any questions?
Looks like it looks good.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Nice for sure.
Yes.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we've got Eva Labor here. Do you want to talk about Special Olympics?
Rex?
We're gonna talk to you guys, first we're gonna talk a little bit about the Iowa Youth Summit that Rex was one of the students who went. We had four kids go, we're allowed to take a unified pair, which if you don't know what unified pair means, that Rex is a unified athlete with our Special Olympics and they call them unified partners to differentiate between the actual athletes. And they're usually kids that don't have the same struggles that the athletes have and you buddy them with someone and hopefully build that relationship to make it stronger. So Rex has been a unified partner since he joined last year for me. Awesome to have him. He knows more about basketball than I do, so it was really good. But he and three of the other kids went with Coach Tom the weekend of December 4th for the Youth Summit and he's gonna tell you a little bit about what they did there.
Um, we did, we had a bunch of meetings almost where, there were two parts, one part for the older kids and how they could do more of the kind of upper class sports where you can travel around the world and around the country to do some of those sports. And then there was the Youth Summit where they had younger kids and their unified partners or where they were trying to become a unified school. And one of the things was how can we get other schools to become a unified school? And one of the ideas I thought about was how we can, our school can do better of doing other sports, like we have a bocce ball thing over at the elementary and we should, we can use that more and bring other, another school to have a big tournament or a big game of bocce ball with our younger kids and maybe even our high school kids. And that's a good idea where we can, where they can experience those things as we do as a unified school.
They got to do a lot of mini sessions where they would do breakout sessions after they, and then they had some downtime where they got to go swimming and just, and they had a dance and they had, you know, so they just got to mingle with other kids and learn about some other things. And the other thing we want to tell you about tonight is the elementary was recognized as being a national unified champion school, which, and the designation is good for four years and we have this giant banner that I do not know if it's up yet or not.
Up yet.
It's really, it's huge, but national unified champion schools, I'll pass this down, have to meet the criteria that fit into four categories. You've got to have, there's a set of standards, it's got to be inclusive in youth leadership, it has to create a whole school engagement at different points and it has to be sustainable. One side, on one side it says the elementary standards and they are slightly different on the back are the standards for the middle school and high school. So those standards, they're not a lot different, but when I started looking at this, it took me three months to write the whole thing up because I kept finding things, oh, maybe I shouldn't do it that way, you know, and, but because the elementary has the kindness club every year that Courtney started, that is all inclusive. Because we do the talent show, because we have our spring track and field, those things are all inclusive. No one is left out of those. And those are the kind of things they're looking for to include kids no matter what. And that's, we just proved we could do it and we need to do that. I need to figure out, we sit down with the guys and write up the high school and middle school. It just, and then all three schools can be national schools. Right now, there are only four schools in Iowa that have the national designation, well three, because there's a high school, a middle school and our elementary, so...
So you have had to like do a lot of work to put it together to submit it?
No, it's online, but when you read it and you read their expectations, you want to make sure you're including what they're looking for. And so, yes, I, I probably overthought it some and then, you know, when I, then I presented it to Courtney and I said, "You read through it for me and just see," and she thought it would work and so we sent it off and we found out early in the fall that, yes, we were accepted, so...
Awesome, very good.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for presenting us, yeah.
So Jeff will, I'm sure Jeff will, when he hangs the banner, we can see, see it on your reports and pictures.
Yes, I actually have a picture of it, I was gonna talk about a little bit tonight, so, but being as you're standing here...
Yes.
Just so you guys know, this is what happens when someone's passionate about something and is selfless and takes charge and just goes. And she needs a big round of applause now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job Rex.
Yes, great job. Great.
So she mentioned Courtney and the kindness club at the elementary and then we've got Friends of Rachel Club, which is, and we will pull that up.
Thank you.
So this is more of the kindness club and this is part of things that came out of Rachel's challenge that we did last year when we got that. So let me find that, this one?
I don't know, you have a clicker.
You just tell me, I'll be your clicker. Okay.
So we are...
Oops, I'm sorry, that was a little too fast.
I'm Katie Namaney.
And I'm Abby Shekinger.
And we're really happy to come here and represent Four Club today.
Can you tell them what four actually stands for?
It means, it means Friends of Rachel and I'll get it sound a little later, but who started it?
Okay, there you are.
Yes, we can post it. All right, so first we're gonna start with how we all started, who, who's all kind of running in the background of this, what we've had accomplished so far and then what we want to see next. So, so Friends of Rachel was started by Darrell Scott when his sister, after his sister was killed in the Columbine school shooting in 1999. And she believed that everybody should be kind so that we can all live in a world with peace and all have a great life with everybody.
So in February last year, someone came and actually spoke to us and we learned all about Rachel's story and about her family and her vision for the world and, like you said, seeing kindness spread throughout everyone because, let's be honest, I think the world could use a little bit of kindness and make everything a lot better. So that is when this renter here started our club and really we kind of brought it about and have been working hard since.
So together we have me as president, our friend Lexi who couldn't be here today for work, but she's vice president, Abby who is Speaker of the House and Lauren because of basketball, she couldn't be here either, but she's like, "Mistake."
We got really professional names.
We decided to make it a little fancy. So when I first joined, I was a little nervous about how we were gonna start this, but growing with these, with everybody in our group and we have, I just found out that we have like 15 years and hopefully start getting more as we start spreading it around school and hopefully we have more freshmen especially joining. But I was just really happy about learning that we can all grow together and make everything kind in our school, especially including others. And I can't wait for the future when me and her are out of school and see what all these younger kids are gonna be doing.
Yeah, so I've always been very active in different school activities. I've always loved to participate, so once this started, this club started, I was like, a club that's solely based around kindness and being nice to others and helping each other just was right up my alley. I loved it. So I've met so many friends in this club, including Katie, like, we did not know each other before this club and I'm like, "Besties," so that worked out great. And I've met so many people, you meet people that you really, it sounds awful, but you really didn't even know went to the school and you just, we all are so inclusive and just, we're really based around helping each other. And as she said, I cannot wait to see where this club goes even after I graduate this year. And because you can see the difference in the school and we just can't wait to see where else it takes us.
And next we have our accomplishments. So our very first big accomplishment was making a chain with everybody, the elementary, the middle school and especially the high school. And together we all wrote nice, kind words, quotes, anything that was good for each other and made a big chain. And it was a pretty big chain, we cut, we made it...
Halfway around the track.
Halfway around the track. But that was our very big accomplishment and hopefully we keep adding to it in the future years.
So at the volleyball game, at the homecoming volleyball game, we made snow cones and gave them to whoever wanted one for free. So this was really fun because again, you just gotta meet new people, everyone was invited, anybody could come get a snow cone and it was just a great way to kind of meet everybody and spread kindness throughout our school.
Um, so as this year comes to an end and we're going out for winter break, we all decided that we want to have a little holiday party and make, have a secret Santa for everybody. And it was really fun and we really got to talk and learn about what we all like together and what we all enjoy and you had to look at that.
Oh, and then we also made birthday cards at this event, so actually today at school, anybody's birthday from this date past, we gave them all a birthday card and a little piece of candy, just as kind of like, "Hey, our school thinks about you, we love you, we're happy you go to our school, like, please feel included" and just kind of like a nice way to say, "Everybody's welcome and everybody, we love everybody," so yeah.
So for what we want next is that we really want to start a middle school four club because eventually these kids are gonna come into the high school and they're gonna want to spread kindness too, so why not start with the younger kids? And we all agreed that eventually one day we should go down there and explain to them what four club is and hopefully working together we can make a big chain reaction in our community, helping the nursing home and helping just all these other people. Yeah, that's it? You want more stuff? Do you have any questions then?
Yeah.
Oh, we adopted a family also, that's a really good point to add. We adopted a family this year for Christmas and that was again, just something really cool to be a part of and do. Um, yeah, we just gotta get presents for people in need, so that was a lot of fun and we will soon be wrapping all of them, so that's a fun little get together that we get to do and listen to some Christmas music and just have a good time.
So where do you get like your funds, like to buy the presents and do the snow cone?
That was from a grant.
Birthday cards?
We got a grant, we're approved through a grant, is that right? We need thriving families. So it used to be Promise Partners, we have a grant through them, so... So we use that to buy the gifts for the students. We also are going to, they want to do a snow cone. Last time we gave them all for free, but next time they want to charge.
I think they know if you took donations for like that stuff.
Um, when we did snow cone the last time though, all the stuff was provided by this renter husband, so...
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, everybody loved them though, it was really nice to make and just seeing all these little kids come over and be like, "Oh, I want one," it really made my spouse.
Yeah, not only, like being kind to other people, I think not only helps someone else, but it really helps yourself too, like, it just makes you overall feel better that you don't go home like, "Oh, I guess I probably shouldn't have said that," like, it just overall makes the world go around better.
Thank you. And hopefully we can get that middle school one started up, the response for that too.
You know, I stated before about it takes people with passion and I think that when you got people who are willing to be, to lead things like this and they've got a passion for it, it makes it go and so we're really blessed to have that.
You can see, you can see the passion in the way you presented.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You didn't see our hand shaking?
No.
We've been really excited that we can all be together and do all this together, especially since that me and her did not know each other and now we're like really best friends. And we both agreed to be here together. And share it all with you, so...
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Run over your foot.
You're clear.
Clear.
Oh, one more. These are just a few more pictures that they have on there, I wasn't sure that they were gonna present something, so I thought. And then just another shout out to the four teachers from the Masonic Lodge, that was very nice of them, kind of a new thing and they're gonna do it in the spring and the, or the fall and the spring. And each teacher got $200 to do whatever they want, so. And then there was also one from Shelby County Catholic as well. And football players were going to be here, I think there was so much stuff going on tonight, Davis might have, he lined them up, but there's, we also have a concert, we have a basketball game and we have bowling going on along with our board meeting tonight, so, but we just wanted to recognize them for their championship. And I think that's, that's it for mine, Jim.
Probably number two later.
Oh yeah, the Facility Committee update. So we decided Jim and Jade and Greg are all on the Facility Committee, they'll be meeting on a regular basis with the architects and construction management team, so we thought we would just add that kind of on a regular basis, we'll just give you an update. So I don't know if you guys want to talk or if you want me to, whatever you like, about just our last one where we're kind of through the schematic design phase, so that's like the 15,000 foot view and now the next phase is to get more details within.
It's a pretty good synopsis right there. Yeah, yeah, we sat here at the table and they had a set of...
So, that's like the 15,000 foot view and now the next phase is to get more details within.
It's a pretty good synopsis right there.
Yeah. Yeah, we sat here at the table and they had a set of plans with the schematics and we looked through and asked the questions, which is important. So, that now they're ready to do the, the, the design phase where you have to figure every nut, bolt, screw, brick and know what it's gonna cost. So, they have a lot of work to do between now and March. And I think we wanted to make sure the public knows that we go on public record, as Al suggested, to say, um, we're on top of it. Hopefully, you're trying your best. Thanks to those of you who worked in that committee, you've been on a lot of hours and you have to put in on that.
I think it was five hours, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You left.
You were there that much longer after.
I stayed all the way through in the morning. I was five hours.
And you got more to go.
I'm in my mailbox right now, actually.
Okay, so, do you want me to just do an accolade to you?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay. Okay, down to you.
Um, well, a couple of things. Here's the flag you guys were asking about. I should have just brought it with me. I took a picture. Cause I was gonna talk a little bit about this. I didn't read far enough to know that Eva was coming, but it's a, what, three foot by five foot banner? Kind of like your state championship banner that we'll put in the elementary gym. We're gonna hang it up over there. So, you mentioned that you kind of wanted to see it.
Yeah, I did.
Good. Yeah, so, yeah, it's pretty cool. But I can't say enough about Eva. I mean, I know she's retired except for that. She's absolutely amazing. But anyway, so if you see her on the street, folks, tell her thanks. Um, up here, um, I didn't get all my pictures in. I missed the deadline, right Catherine? No comment. But this is a picture. Ellie Kreese is one of our fourth grade teachers and she lined up a, um, trip to Iowa Western Community College. And I think it was a partnership between Mertu Medical Center and our high school biology class and Iowa Western. So, those are just, um, pictures of that. Something else I want to talk about, I think I mentioned last time, our change challenge, coins change. So, um, I don't have a picture of it, but we broke our record just in spare change at the elementary, we raised over $4,200, if you can believe that. All it cost me was a pie in the face and a classroom pizza party, I think is what they told me. They get to pick. Um, but, uh, and then we adopted seven.
You choose between those two things.
They got both of them. They got both of them. Yeah, I don't know when that's gonna happen. Yeah, um, but we adopted seven families, um, that were, you know, they have a list of families. So, the elementary school adopted seven families. And then we also, um, I talked to Mrs. King. She was gonna take some money and help clear up some delinquent, um, lunch accounts possibly. And then also donate to, um, there's a, we have a growing number of families who don't have transportation and they have been purchasing Switta. And so, which gets expensive. It's one or two dollars a trip depending on where they live. So, um, some of that may be donated to families that are needing some support with that as well. So, um...
Wow, that is great.
Yeah, so really cool that, we make a huge deal of it at school because, you know, really raising money for themselves. You know, really, because it's all the families right here in town. So, anyway, it's pretty cool. And if you, um, Eva was talking about the talent show, we just moved it up obviously to Wednesday now. But if you want to see something entertaining, come to the elementary school in the morning, um, on Wednesday and you can watch the elementary talent show. It is, I, it's my second favorite day of the year. The first day of school is my favorite, but this one's pretty cool.
What grades?
Um, it's the intermediate school. Get to do it. So...
At what time?
Uh, it starts at 8:30 and then we run about two hours.
Cool.
So, and they, yeah, they have, you'll see talent from magic tricks to spinning a ball on your finger to gymnastics, to piano, art, um, uh, singing, sometimes just a cappella, making up the words as you go. And I'm not even joking. Those are my favorites because they might just get up there and I say, "What's the name of your song?" And they'll say, um, "School Before Christmas." And then they just go. But, um, to me, it's one of the greatest things these kids do because they have to get up in front of their peers. It is so, that's why I just love it because, um, you see kids out there with courage that you didn't know was there. And so, anyway, if you want to see something fun, that's one of the best days of the year, I think, with whatever elementary talent show. Yeah.
Also, I don't know if you guys have heard it or not. I had never heard it before. I was in making coffees and it wasn't on my regular day. It was on Friday in the intermediate side. And the phone where I was at started going off. I thought we were under some sort of attack. I wasn't sure what was going on. But then I hear him get out, like all this like heavy revving up music. I'm like, "What are they doing?"
For the main event?
I don't know if you'll be able to hear it on my phone, but if you've never heard this, I did. Please come listen to this at some point. I... Like, this is what's going over the phone. I thought, I'm not sure what we got going on here. But then how excited he gets and those kids are just in there like waiting to hear their name. It was great. Did you see the outfit?
Well, I used to zoom. I have, oh my God.
Like, we don't have to listen to the whole thing, but that made my day. I thought it was so...
Yeah, on Fridays, what we do is, we've been doing that for a while, for 18 years now. But if they get nominated by their teachers for great academic work, we just announce them like they're, uh, getting announced in a bowls game back in the eighties.
It was great.
Yeah, and then they get a certificate and, yeah, they...
This was a couple of weeks ago, but it made my Friday. It was really cool to listen to.
I didn't remember school being that much fun when I was in elementary. That's great.
It's fun. Remember so days either.
Such things.
Yeah. Well, thank you for saying, but that's, yeah, there's a guy named Lerner Man that gives those out sometimes.
I don't know if you guys see that.
He looks like COVID.
I am not seeing, I didn't see the outfit. I just was in the copyright. It was pretty fun.
He might be at the, there's word that Lerner Man is coming to the talent show.
Does he come to every Friday or just some Fridays?
No, he just, he's busy. So, he only comes to some Fridays.
I'm not sure if he was there that Friday or not.
No, he was not. He's only there when we zoom video.
Oh.
And then which Wednesday is the talent show?
This, well, it was on Friday. It's always the last day of school before Christmas and now it's Wednesday.
Gotcha.
Day after tomorrow.
Yes, yeah, because we moved up. Yeah.
Okay, middle school Bill is actually, there was a middle school, um, rep that actually called in sick. So, Bill's repping the middle school game. So, yeah, and then he's going to the concert. So, here's some middle school pictures. I'm not exactly sure what's going on, but he can definitely... They do a lot of things for each other down there as well. That's kind of the theme tonight. So, I think that's probably what he, I don't know if you can see down there even on the right, but they were handed out some things. So, it looks like, oh, well, here we go. Veterans Assembly, Hawkeye fans, um, dog presentation and communications class, candy corn bag. Oh, she made that in sewing class. Look at that. Um, lunchtime helpers and backpack challenges. So...
Nice.
And Brian Mosher, working on math. That kid loves math. He's a great kid. So... And high school, amazing.
Yep, just, uh, we're, we're working on wrapping up the semester. We're now, we had to move everything up by two days. So, um, scramble this week or today to just get everything in place for a semester test schedule. A couple of things. I just put a picture of Jenny Swinson and Jaden Vanderburg, our counselors. They deserve a huge shout out. They're just, they work with kids so well. They are on top of everything. If I have a question, they are usually, usually asking me before I even know I have a question to ask. Um, I just wanted to take a picture. They're also in there, Thursdays, we're doing Christmas sweater day for everybody. So, some kids are coming in wearing Christmas sweaters in December and, um, and the staff is really doing it, doing it too. So, it's been fun all December and wearing holiday gear. So, um, but, but just wanted to thank them for all they've done. I, I couldn't do it without them. So, I really appreciate them. Have some students in class. Uh, I think it was Mr. Murtaugh's class up there in the top left. They were reviewing for a test, I believe. And, um, and just everybody's starting to, it's crunch time. You see kids just learning how, how important time management and getting work done on time and things like that really come into play. There's, there's a lot of learning that takes place outside of actual class and just, just that responsibility side is, is a focus. And I said, "Just don't let it break until you leave for, until you leave for break." You know, just keep pushing and keep, and, you know, you will feel stressed at different times in your life. You just have to learn how to keep working through and, and things like that. So, um, and then I have some senior girls down there in the senior lounge. Just they're, they're taking time. I think this was during lunch, but you, I see them and they're always working hard, um, making sure they have work done. They're nice group of girls to get to know. And so, yeah, that's the high school. We will have semester tests beginning tomorrow morning, um, five tomorrow and then three on Wednesday. Have a little bit of an incentive. If student grades, we're pulling grades a couple of times. And so, if grades are above passing, then open campus is an option. If they are at risk, then we want students to stay here and keep working, you know, just to do all they can just to try to get that graduation credit. So, um, a, a small difference that we're making is just focusing on if they should be here, we're going to, we might have to force them, but we're gonna keep them here and, and, and just help them do whatever they can just to get that credit. You guys remember, like at the very end of the semester, it's so easy to just say, "Oh, I'm just done." No, stay. Just do a little bit more, you know, just keep doing, keep going until you're done. You've done your very best. So, that's a, a push we have this week. So...
Maybe it's, it's a shorter push now.
It is shorter. So, well, it'll be nice when we hit three o'clock on Wednesday, but right now I think there's more of a scramble because I thought they had more time to prepare and teachers felt the same way and now it's just shortened by a day or so.
Your own.
Their early exams.
Yeah, a little bit more stress. I had a couple of kids come by my office like, "Oh, what do I do? I have all these tests." And I mean, just high stress. I'm like, "We just need to just prioritize and just figure out what the next thing is." I said, "You're gonna be stressed at different times in your life and this is good for you to learn." Said, "You stop back in if you need something," but, you know, it's, it's, this is the age where you just learn how to handle those stressful times. And instead of, instead of trying to change everything so that it doesn't happen, it's more important to just have them learn how to power through. You know, just keep going and it'll, it'll get better. It'll, it'll get better.
At least everyone has the same, um, same test at the same time. So, facing the same.
Yeah, everybody, yep, yep. So, and then three o'clock on Wednesday, we can all do a cartwheel as we...
Go home again.
Get done.
We'll bounce. So, that's a good feeling.
Thank you, Dr. Barnett. We are to item E, action items, and we'll put Catherine on the agenda here first. Number one for the personnel report. If you want to tell us some about that.
Not a lot to report again. I mean, we, we have hired four new, um, well, one coach and three new positions at school. We've gotten a couple of new, uh, teacher associates and, and, oh, he left. But we've got some new kids coming in and so we're gonna continue to have to, when they come in, we have, and they have parameters. So, we have to hire for them. Um, those are just all of our openings. And last week we had three interviews for the high school.
I had five.
Wow.
I had four and then a kinda.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, so we're starting to interview because we've had the early retirement notifications. So...
For the same position or different?
Three different positions.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And then we've got some Thursday that will...
Yep, some elementary, uh, interviews on Thursday. And we've decided we're doing those via Zoom just because of the weather and we don't want people traveling. So, um, uh, it's really, it's really great. I feel like we're kind of in a good spot right now. Yep, so...
And great interviews.
Yeah.
Some really good applicants.
Good.
Anybody have any questions? Obviously no. Great.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
Second, second by Al. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no? Okay, next we have number two. This is the approval of a progress payment to De novo Incorporated in the amount of $402,444.20 to be made after general obligation bond proceeds have been received.
Yeah, this is a little different than normal because I'm asking, rather than to wait till next month's board meeting, we have a billing, um, that is sitting there, but obviously we don't want to pay that till we actually receive the general obligation bonds tomorrow. So, I'm asking this one ahead of time. The rest of them will, will, uh, will, we've already had the contracts already signed and everything. So, we're, we, you know, we'll make them as they come in and then they'll be approved at the board meeting. This one I'm asking ahead of time because it's actually, otherwise we'd have had to wait till the next board meeting. This one is an outlier, shall we say. I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve the $402,000 payment. And second?
Second.
Second by Monty. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, no? Next we have item three, the approval of the at-risk plan for Harlan Community School District for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. And it's, it says here that, uh, all students will meet or exceed state proficiencies. And you want to explain it just a little bit?
Sure. So, this, um... So, this is an at-risk plan that has to be approved each year by the board. And basically it just helps, every district has to do it and it's just the way that you, um, identify, I guess, kids that might be at risk of not graduating. And it, it could be even kindergarten and first graders and you look at their reading levels and just, there's lots of different factors within that. So, your goal is that you want a hundred percent to graduate. Now, um, you know, that doesn't always happen for every single, no district has a hundred percent, but that's definitely what our goal is. If we can get to a hundred percent, that's where we're coming from. So, there's just lots of different strategies in here that, um, we work on and things that we provide as a district to support this. And then we get additional funding for at-risk students. So, that's gonna be up here in a little bit. And, uh, that, that's what we use that money or it aligns with this plan.
And you actually wrote these plans or have written this?
I wrote this one. Yeah, this was, yes, I wrote this one.
Some of them, some people have very, 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 very detailed ones. Some people have three lines on a page. This is nicely done because it's very easy to read it. It makes sense.
Yeah. I like things that make sense. Anything else? Any other discussion on it? Could we have a motion to approve the at-risk plan?
Who sent that?
Moved by Al.
Second.
Thank you.
Second, Joan in Blue Glows. Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, next we have the, uh, item number four, approval of requests for allowable growth for modified supplemental amount for dropout, dropout prevention in the amount of $510,099. There's a number there, Brian, maybe to associate this for us.
It's something we do annually. It's the, the, the funding we get for the at-risk program. Um, there is a 25% match by the district, but this is the funds that we, that we do get in order to maintain at-risk programs.
We get them from the legislature or?
We get the authority to do this.
This is, this is authority we're getting in this.
So, that is something, Al, that's in, um, a topic and I think it was discussed at the legislature, at the delegate assembly too. Because at-risk, like we, we get 5%. legislature, at the delegate assembly too, because at-risk, like we, we get 5%, 5% of our tool is.
Nearly all the districts in the state of Iowa get 5%, but not all of them do. I think, I want to say there's two, 270, please don't quote me, I think 270 get the 5%. Several, maybe even 10 years ago, there, if districts didn't apply for the full 5%, then some districts would only get 2.5% and I believe there's maybe even a couple that didn't apply at all, they get 0%. Well, the state has never rectified that because if you only asked for 2.5%, they gave you 2.5%, well, you were locked into that. Nearly all the districts, the majority of them obviously applied for the 5% for the full funding, but there are still some that are at the 2.5%. And what they've attempted for the last, I think, three years is the, the lead, it's, bill's been brought forward to rectify that because to be honest with you, Larry Siegel says basically those goals are getting shorted in that funding because at one time they didn't apply for it all.
So if we have the authority, for instance, for last year, did we use a lot of that authority or?
We, we, on the at-risk program, yes, because it's a categorical, so yes, you are going to use that, those funding, yeah.
So Jim, it could be used for parts of the counselor's salaries, so not, not all, but parts. It could be used for Brenda Renter with school-based interventions that we get through the AEA to pay for her, we have, so.
They've really changed the program over the years because it used to be, it was very targeted, what you had to do. They've made it a lot more broad-based where you can do things that benefit the student population as a whole.
Anything that you can confirm will benefit us too from not dropping out of school?
Very good. Okay, can we have a motion for the approval of the request for the supplemental amount?
So moved.
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Second by Joni. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Next we have item number five, approval of the PE waiver. That stands for physical education. Sorry.
When I said it, Jim was like, oh, no.
Want to speak to that?
Yeah, the PE waiver in the state of Iowa in code, it says that every high school student has to have PE every single semester. So there's a waiver that you can apply for, that maybe that doesn't happen for every single time, like you could take PE twice in one semester, you could take PE in health.
You have a full class load. And that's what, if you have, if you have a full class load, you can ask for a waiver to, to take a class instead of PE.
Do they need to do that for medical also?
Yeah, but that's, that's a different, I think that's a different waiver. So this would be like, I, I just want to take, I want to fill my classes up, I want to, I don't know, graduate early or, you know, and I want to take English instead of PE, you know, this class period, so I'm going to request a waiver. We don't have a lot, ton of students who do that. Most students are taking PE, but yeah, time to time you'll have.
At least it gives you the option.
Yep, they can have that option then, yep.
Sometimes you have to deny it, I imagine, also.
If they don't have a full case load, you know, class load, I mean, if they don't have a full class load, then, and they want to take like a study hall instead of PE, then we'd say, you don't have a full class load, you can't even ask, apply for a waiver, you know, we wouldn't even let them do that. You'd have to fill your class load up to, to get out of PE.
Who makes those calls here?
Yeah, usually the counselors will come in and ask, you know, they, they will kind of filter, if a kid doesn't have a full case load, class load, then they'll say, don't ask, you've got to take PE, something like that. But if it's something that would be beneficial to the kid and to the student, you know, yeah, that's better for them one way or another, it's just all.
More an exception than a rule, for sure.
No, sounds good.
There he is.
Hold on.
So moved by Jade and second? Second. And Monty on the second? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, now we are to the approval of the, I'll call it the Lou Plan, I hope I'm saying it right there. And this basically, it comes from a Supreme Court case between Lou and Nichols, saying basically that all students, even if they do not speak English, are entitled to an education. Am I saying that right?
So Anna is on her way, Anna Gill, so if we have specific questions to her, Anna is our English learner and teacher. She, whatever's highlighted are changes, so those are changes that she made, so she left those in there because it hadn't been board approved, so definitely feel free to ask her. The, it's actually called a LAO plan, so it was close, Jim. But LAO is the last name, so that's not an acronym. There are many different acronyms in here, so it's sometimes kind of confusing and they used to be called ESL students, English as second language, then it was changed to ELL, English Language Learners, and now they're just EL, English Learners. So that's just like the way things are in code. Anna does an excellent job in which she gets here, she's, she runs the gamut. So she's down at the elementary, she's at the middle school and she's at the high school. We are close to 50 students that she oversees and that's a lot, especially when you consider if a, like a special education student, their special education teacher rosters might be 16. So Anna has 50 kids that may need a lot of help and may, there's five different levels, so those that are just coming, just learning the language have a higher level of need than those that aren't. So she kind of just watches and oversees, works with lots and lots of families. She translated the message today that we sent out and then touches base with those families just to make sure they understand. So Anna does a ton and this is, every year as a board, we have to approve it.
So did I read it right? Are you wanting additional funding for it?
We are thinking that maybe we, we may need some help, some help for her because she is spread very thin. We haven't, we haven't, you know, made that decision yet, but we actually do have another teacher who's retiring, who has an EL degree. So, because it's not an easy thing to find either. Or even, even we were thinking on the lines of a, a paraprofessional that maybe is bilingual or something that, that could help in that capacity too. So they could provide instruction, but they could provide some support. So yes, we are, we, we have thought about that, like next year she may, may need some additional support, so.
How many different languages are there? Is it just two? There are school districts, I know.
We just started, we just pulled it up and I just was explaining that you have about 50 kids and that's a lot because when it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right now I have 46 students, okay? And I think that when I started, we have probably around, kind of around 50. Then they drop out the number of students and then from last year to this year, we have this really big increase on the number of students and.
I think you were at 30 when school started. You were, you were at 28 to 29, and now you're explaining that much just since school started.
And I, I remember that when I started with the program here, we were two teachers, so I would do secondary and another teacher would do the elementary. And then got to a point that things changed and I, I, I am doing the ESL for the district. And so I have provided some of my information. If you are interested, I can, like my, my school building or, you know, like this year I have 16 at the primary school, nine at the intermediate, 10 at the middle school and 11 at the high school. So these are how they are divided and I just use my time to really give each side of the street, you know, the buildings, the same amount, the fair amount of time for all of them because I have K-12, I have students from all major levels.
As you were coming in, I was asking about how many different languages, is it just, it's primarily Spanish, I presume? But if you have, like there are school districts that have five or six different languages.
Yes, yes.
Do they all come to you?
They would come to me. So I would say that probably three years ago, I had French, I had most Spanish, but I have two families that would speak French, they were from Congo in Africa, and I had students that would, would speak Arabic. But she came to us with some English, she just needed like the writing and the reading part, you know? But right now, all our students are Spanish-speaking, yeah, all of them are Spanish-speaking.
And Anna, I just said that you, you, we attached this one that has the highlighted pieces because those are the changes, right?
Those are the changes from last year, yes.
Is there anything specific that you wanted to talk about because otherwise they?
I think that basically what I just, like I just add Steve, you know, as the ESL for Nader and then one thing that.
Is that an addition to his duties now or?
It's part of his. It's part of his, so he basically just supervises Anna and then Anna does all the work. Yeah, so we, yeah.
I added, I don't know if, you know, I added this piece here and part of this is something that I also talk about during the PD that I have at the beginning of the year with the teachers, you know? And just stating what the LAO plan is and how we, yeah, just like what the plan is, the LAO plan is and then the LAO plan, the district, the district plan is designed to meet the instructional needs of ELS, you know, and I share that with the teachers. I am the expert in the ESL area, but I'm not expert in all grade levels, so that's when we work together just to meet the needs of the students.
So Anna, are we talking a little bit about like EL, ESL, ELL, they're all synonymous?
Yeah.
Okay.
ESL is the name of the program, English as a second language. ELL is the student, English, English Language Learner. But more, we, we start, more and more, we're starting just like ELS, the ELL or, the EL or ELL is the same thing, yes, but ESL the program and ELL the student.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We also, we're talking to Anna about just, it might be, you might need some help, not might, but you probably need some help, so we're just trying to brainstorm some ways that an additional person can, will just go sell it, we'll, we'll see.
How many languages do you speak?
My, my native language is Portuguese, I am from Brazil and I continue working on my English and my Spanish, yes.
We foresee these numbers staying around the 50 students, roughly?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And it's interesting because as you mentioned, Atlantic, Atlantic has a lot of different languages and I am, so far I'm good here with our Spanish, but we never know when another language will, will come back, you know? But we'll find a way to reach and to, to help that student.
We do have, there's a consultant with the AEA that is ours, it's free, so her name is Brielle.
Brielle Servin.
Servin. And she, so if, if we would need something, she can help us connect with resources as.
Yeah, and she's a great resource, a great resource.
Do we ever put this to the community at all and ask, like in the sense of if a language was needed for interpretation or how does that, like you said, Arabic, I know someone that personally in our community is fluent in it, like.
Oh, no, but we definitely could if we would need that, yeah. Should we just?
We, we always try to find someone in the community that would help, you know? And I know that in the past, even when we have the French-speaking students, we found someone in the community, so we always look here first, yeah.
We did hire a Spanish-speaking para, two of them.
We have two paras.
So that's just recently, so that's helpful. They help at conferences, they help.
They help, they help at elementary because they're where they have the structured meetings with all parents, you know, here in Zoom, come and go. So it's easier for me to put new people or doing over there because they know where they go and then I stay here and help with the parents at the high school and the school.
So tonight we're just voting to approve this?
Yeah, it's just the.
The changes?
Just the changes with names, most was the name or the names and just this part that I, I added. And then there is one here that now I have Oxford Pictionary, that is another source that I can share with them and they can carry with them, take home or whatever, you know? And there is something on the PD.
So Anna provides professional development every year, which is required for all teachers. So at the beginning of the year, she meets with them and goes over?
Because this is all follow the guidelines that we needed to, the state requires us. And we had two options for PD where all the teachers would need to go and watch all the modules and this is probably more than six hours of modules watching, you know? And so with the instructional coaches, we work together and this was the third year that we do the, we started doing the PD where I give all this information because we always have new teachers, you know, and strategies that they can use in class, how we can work together to meet their needs. And, and we also have, always have an activity to do with the staff. And so that's why I add what I am doing now, that I think it's, makes much more sense to them than watching the module. The module would be more for me.
Yes, they do.
You know, and I say, who wants to sit there and watch all those modules and, you know? So Tanya Brooke really helped me to put together this, this PD and every year we just update or change a few, put something different, but the base that they needed to, to know, we repeat every day. And then, so this I just highlighted here and I believe that's it. Yeah, and then just the names.
This really isn't about the plan, it's more about curiosity. The pitch, Oxford Pictionary, I don't know who to direct this to, and Rosetta Stone, are those charged by the pupil or is it an overall cost?
Through AEA, for the older students, we have access to Rosetta Stone free. And for the little kids, we have another program that is very interesting and very good, that's called Imagine Learning. They, we also have access to that through AEA free.
Well, I was just curious, if it works in one direction, could it work in the other direction? I mean, would the other students have access to this to be able to learn Spanish? I mean, I'm just out of curiosity.
I don't know if the Spanish teachers use, use it or not.
I don't think they use it.
They, they have other resources, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know.
Just curious.
Discussion or could we have a motion to approve the Lou Plan?
Wow.
I think a motion to approve the LAO Plan.
Thank you, Anna.
Put the motion in this second, this by Joe. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay.
Thanks, Anna.
Thanks, Anna.
Very much.
You already keep busy.
Okay, we're to action item E7, the policy review schedule, second reading. To discuss it, I think there were some, is this the one there was some discussion about?
I think that got moved to the first year.
I think that got moved to the first reading, because we had, we talked about it, so, yeah.
About the second reading, was there anything on the committee that you need to talk about there?
Not mine. Maybe others, not mine.
I left all that alone.
How was the approval of the second reading? Thank you very much. That moved, second by, right, she beat.
Oh.
Greg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, now we're to action item E8, policy review schedule, first reading.
So the only thing, that, the reason it got moved to the first reading is, it was 5:00?
3:00.
Yeah. 6:00, 6:02?
Sorry, make me say.
Nope, there we were, 6:02.
Right. Right? Oh, I see the number though, yeah.
Wow, I mean, so just that, 6:05, yes, 3. So what we had talked about last month, the IASB had suggested some changes, and we came to the conclusion that we were fine adopting all of those changes except for the green. The complaintant, the way it reads now in our policy, it would still say that the complaintant, if they so choose, may make an oral presentation to the committee and elaborate on their complaints. So aside from that, we adopted all of the other IASB language.
Basically, you're replacing?
We're just keeping it the way our policy states now. The IASB language wanted it to be the committee gets to choose.
The one that crossed out, correct, yes, okay.
So we adopted everything but those lines, correct. If everyone is fine.
Who met with you on that?
Me and Al and Catherine and Sarah Fink from the AEA, the librarian, met on that.
And these are first readings, so we'll have another chance to...
Yeah, and technically we are third reading, because we discussed it last month.
First one, did count.
Yeah. Will be the fourth, because I think last time it was on a second reading, not that that matters, but...
Well, we're being thorough, we appreciate the committee's work on it. And how about a motion to approve the policy review schedule, first reading, action item E8? So moved by Al, the second?
Second.
Second by Joni, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Next item is the consent agenda, item number nine. So we have ABC here, and so we'll open that up, see if there's any questions that we can perhaps direct toward Brian.
I did not see anything.
Hot seat, right? Let's see. I put an X by a couple on here, Brian, I just thought I would ask the question, I saw, let's see, first of all, on the, there's some software, I imagine, that's pre-standard type thing?
You'd have to tell me who it is.
This is to, oh, yeah, software, I want to say Grant Wood, there's a great one there.
And Jenny actually probably can elaborate on that one more than I can.
So that is a contract with, they help us support Power School, which is our whole student information system. So we moved away from housing it ourselves to Grant Wood, which is safer to keep the data, plus they provide all kinds of help desk access and can answer a lot of technical questions pretty quickly, so they've been wonderful. So that just started this year.
Is that a one-time, or will be?
Um, I don't know.
It's an annual charge. I, I don't have exactly the amount here, but it's, the first year, what, yeah, first year it's higher, and then it goes down, because you have some upfront costs, just like with any software.
But that is actually the cost of the Power School software as well as the support, so there's, we would have had that Power School cost, whether we partnered with them or not. Lots of districts around here are, they can get a better deal, because so many districts have, so many districts buy versus us having to do it ourselves, so, yeah.
And there's 61,000 for Iowa Western, is that part of the?
That's our concurrent enrollment classes for the first semester, that's the small installment, the next one's larger.
Sure, sure. And that's so that they can get credit for college?
We are required by, and Jenny can elaborate, but we are required by law to provide those classes, and that's every school district in the state of Iowa has to do this, if they choose to take them.
But it seems like Harlan is, there's more students that take advantage of that, is that just because of the costs, or?
We have probably more opportunities.
We have lots of teachers, I feel like, at the high school level, who actually teach them versus kids having to go to Iowa Western or take them online. Those are both options as well. I also think, and this is, I, I feel like we have a higher percentage than some districts of college bound students, so they start taking those classes at a time. Some can come, go to college as a junior, when they're 18 years old, so it's a great deal.
Our utilization is good.
And...
And it's, although there's a cost, it's also, it's, it's opportunities we're providing for our students.
It's good for the students and the community, because if they come back from there. I, I will say, I think we have a really good system. I was at student attendant meeting last week, and another local district said their pass rate was about 50%, and ours is much, much higher than that. So our kids that are taking them are taking them seriously, and it's worth, it's worth the investment that we're giving.
We also include our career center, so kids who are heading to Iowa Western in the afternoons to, for auto and diesel mechanics, industrial technology, health occupations, or welding, so they'll end up with a one-year certification from Iowa Western that they can just turn right over and apply to the workforce, or they can go to Iowa Western and take their last year and get an associate's degree, so.
Is that kind of a overall one, or does it depend on how many students actually take the courses?
Yep, that's what, it's per course.
It is per course, yeah. It's per credit hour, I believe.
Sure, sure. Another one I was going to ask about, Brian, is the one for standard course financial services, the bond rating, that, there's no chance that that could be included with Viper JAP or anything?
That's actually part of the total cost when you go through the bond issue, you have to go through the rating.
Yeah, but that's a separate from...
Absolutely, yeah, it's, it's, it's a required thing to go through.
I appreciated your comments over here on the financial report, treasurers report by fund, and it's just nice of the comments under me, help us to follow them.
Those are done a cumulative year-to-date. Now, going forward, the next one will be just by the month. While we're going through the audit, I do not issue those, because obviously I don't, I don't have final figures. Once I get to the point where I can actually give you one, I'll give you a year, year-to-date. Everyone thereafter will be just, I'll tell you what happened that month.
Is there anything else, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Otherwise, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Okay, we got Joni on the first, and we got Greg on the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? And the last item here is the adjournment.
So moved.
Jay, this is second. We would like the second motion, we got it by Joe. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay.